Hi guys, this is Praios and yeah today another session review looking into the hands from today's session. Today I ran terrible as you can see my EV was about even but I lost about 700 bucks, a bit annoying but yeah what can you do? I think I played okay, not great but also not bad so yeah let's look into some of the hands this is the first one this looks pretty close I think this is still a call but let's figure this out hmm okay okay everything is it's not now it is correct sorry for that forgot to fool for the big blinds so yeah otherwise the results would have been very surprising yeah looks like our hand is a call but it's very close wouldn't blame anyone for fooling that's for sure yeah this was quick and easy let's move on to the next one oh this was most definitely a spury I re-raised and I folded but yeah I don't think that this is a 3-bet but let's find out I'm not even sure if this is a call because I was unsure what this hand is I want to look into this now double suited is a call and singles suited to the ace it's a call as well and not a 3-bet which I did free betting still isn't that big of a mistake as you can see although calling makes more EV according to GTO and in this spot also calling would be the way to go as we got one green guy behind a green is a mark the colour for recreational players and yeah so we want to keep him in the pot and don't want to scare him away by re-raising so yeah I don't like it and it's also wrong according to GTO okay let's look into this so he opens from the button cut off small blind fools we re-raise he calls flop is king reduce king reduce we got the exact board and yeah what is our line of action now in the GTO universe ace ace 10-5 line of action is 50% in case yeah basically betting full pot seems to be the way to go although this is not covering this situation that well because yeah he min-raised and we made it like 7BB or something pre-flop so the pot-to-stake ratio is a lot bigger than in normal 3-bet pots so yeah this is not showing the reality too well but what if we pot yeah I guess if once we pot we will not fold anymore that's like 100% and yeah that's the case in this case I didn't like to ship it in now although I also made a mistake by not potting although I am not sure if it's a mistake as the pot-to-stake ratio is a lot bigger than in a normal 3-bet pots yeah he's giving us a good price so I guess calling is the best line of action here to be honest I'm already very scared yeah legolas might have said here he seems to be a recreational player too at least I have no hands on him yet and the two hands I got from him now he looks more on the fishier side so yeah yeah GTO suggests to pot call I think that's a board texture let's see what our general game plan is on a board texture like this as this is also quite interesting yeah we bet 50% a bit and most of the time we bet the full pots and yeah let's hop into some hands and try to find out which hand categories are bad for half-pot and which for full pot what about aces the very strong aces often go for just 50% so ace-ace king-king for example yeah this is again a bit annoying because normally there is no mixed strategy but yeah an ace with a gut shot seems to be fine betting 50% pot sometimes but are these only the gut shots to the nut straight and not with the lower gut shot it seems to be the case well sometimes it's like ace-ace queen-10 is ace-ace queen-10 bad calling then or not I guess probably not what else yeah aces that mist completely often with 50% and I it might be the case when these aces are still folding that's also interesting let's find this out he raises pot and we got weak aces yeah with some of the weakest aces we still fold the ones that have no interaction with the board at all the ones with a little bit of backup call or put it in yeah don't get this call and yeah it's also only 6% so ace-ace king-jack okay if you block the king you sometimes just call so we only fold our aces which are having no interaction with the board or the other ones we want to get in yeah but let's again look into the entire range not just aces so what else betting 50% king-jack 6-7 so these are also bad fools king-queen-queen 7 also a bad fold 4-5-7 that's an open ender probably a bad fold too 4-5-78 again queen-queen-5-due so blocking a board pair and queens with a king on board so that's definitely also a bluff 6-6-7-7 another bluff yeah so a lot of air balls in here yeah stuff that doesn't cannot continue otherwise but yeah we should have some fold equity on this board at least let's now look into the full pot bets so two pair sets but sets are mixed some sets also want to bet only 50% or check yeah especially the ones that also got a gut shot with it blocking like the entire continuing range from your opponent definitely want to bet smaller or even check this makes sense too king-queen 6-5 yeah I guess this hand will also get it in ace-king-jack 7 yeah so top better picker overcast to the board let's move down to some of the weaker hands we got ace-9-8 so this has to be a bad fold same is true for ace-jack 10-9 ace-jack 10-9 has it has hearts and clubs so it has some nice back doors but yeah otherwise it's a complete bluff same is true for ace-7-7-6 though the back doors for wish was one either ace-9-7-7 so one backdoor flush for only yeah in general this is a board where I would expect the pre-flop aggressor to bet a lot on because yeah this is expected to hit our range a lot harder when the range of legolas I always say legolas because I think that's Orlando Bloom and yeah that's from the movie Lord of the Rings and yeah it says picture and yeah that's of legolas in his profile so that's why I call him just if you wonder why this is too not big enough for you to see it yeah okay let's also so the main size we are facing is pot so how is legolas supposed to continue in this spot legolas wants to slow play some of his very good made hands which crush the board completely like kings with an open ender for example yeah he also seems like he's fooling a lot more than 50% calling some the majority of his range actually and if he continues he's not often raising small his main size is a big raise yeah I guess that's just a function of our bad size I mean if we bet pot we will not fold much anymore so yeah if he gets it in he has to have a strong range and a small re-raise basically has makes not that much sense in this spot I suppose so sets are re-raising makes sense for sure what else is re-raising ace-king 9-6 okay this one is okay it's a 2% so I guess basically we can say this is not re-raising this is just because the solver didn't run long enough and there are some hands in here still which don't belong here I guess although this could be in here but yeah okay let's look into some stuff that has higher percentages 94% for ace 6-4-3 this seems quite ambitious but yeah you often have yeah you might have enough equity and still some fold equity so fine this hand also has two backdoor flush draws so yeah we stacking some equity and if we have against a lot yeah this might be fine so let's see some more hands all this gut shot tough stuff so that's an open ender big backdoor flush draw excuse me ace 8-4 yeah so open ender surprisingly often want to get it in king with a gut shot wants to get it in double pair which also has an open ender with it yeah so some marginal stuff in there and some very good hands as this definitely makes sense because you want to be balanced you don't want to re-raise your best hand only you need to have some weak stuff in there too otherwise your opponent could read you very well and could make a lot of laydowns and yeah you don't want to be readable that easy so you got to be balanced let's now look into the calls a lot of slow plays especially with top set this makes sense because if we have the top set it's very unlikely that our opponent can continue I mean he can continue with aces most likely but he will not have ace-king that often and yeah that's why we can't we play our our top set of kings slow very often so everything here seems to be kings we want to see some of the more marginal stuff seems like I have to scroll down a lot okay here are some two pair hands these are also although two pair yeah okay two pair is also seems to be slow played a lot makes sense as these combinations also blocking the continuing range opponent heavily king for yeah king for let's hide the 0% frequencies no it's not king for my bad I was obviously talking about king 3 so top two pair yeah these combination is okay let's remove the top set from this one and yeah this hand is re-raising about 60% and calling 40% what's about the top set okay top set is slow played 100% of the time sick so yeah we strengthen our continuing range a lot by doing that yeah I guess in reality that's not happening every time but yeah it definitely makes sense on a dry board like this to slow play your top set what about threes so the other sets are usually being slow played and this also makes a lot of sense not slow played I've played fast because now all the ace-king hands our opponent can have might stack off and we don't want to yeah to roll off cards that might kill the action so yeah this is also makes a lot of sense so slow playing top set not slow playing our middle and bottom set what about king 2 king 2 okay king 3 was raised the majority of the time but had some slow plays and king 2 is slow playing most of the time let's see okay let's remove the set from this one let's also remove the set of 3 is this working out yeah it is so if you have king 2 we want to call most of the time and re-raised only about 22% what about bottom 2 bottom 2 are played more aggressively actually but let's remove king-king 3-3 and 2-2 and also a king okay this didn't work out why not so we have 2-3 without let's just use the syntax I used before because that seemed to work so yeah that's working and yeah we still raise a lot I guess the reason for this is that we want to end their hand right now and we don't yeah basically every card that might come off is hurting us and yeah we want to end their hand right now or get it in and yeah don't want to face that many difficult decisions I mean the solver doesn't have any problem with difficult decisions but assuming this makes sense and yeah also yeah this hand has no great playability so getting it in right now makes a lot of sense we also we don't know which cards help our opponent and yeah he has a lot of king-axe or aces and against these hands we do well but it's sort of a guessing game if we just call and we are also yeah I mean we there are no great runouts with many of these hands for us so yeah re-raising is the way to go I mean that's at least the reasoning I think makes sense here moving on to the next hand should I have re-raised I think so now the question is how to proceed against forward that's interesting I think I called not sure if this is correct double suited is most definitely a call singles suited I am unsure and yeah double suited actually wants to ship it in and things where they want to fold and how big is our mistake because the singles suited version yeah it's quite a big quite a big mistake in GTO yeah this is a mistake of like we got the ace side flush draw of 4 BBs to call here so yeah this wasn't that good but for some reason I thought that nice connected hand like this should not be go to the mag yet but yeah it was wrong this is also interesting not sure if this is an open and it's probably not a call now question is if it's maybe a bluff forward or let's call it bluff forward I guess it's not an open most likely and yeah let's look into this and yeah let's see if our hand is in the opening category or was in the opening category if that would be the case we should find it now most likely another folding category ace-jack-jack 9 with a lot of ones you it's in the opening category as it seems yeah it is but it is supposed to fold now if it's double suited we should now forward it's like sort of a bluff because we down we unblock king-king and cancel like queen-queen and these are supposed to fold against the forward yeah that's why he wants to forward this one but only if double suited otherwise we should fold I hope I folded I think I folded but I'm not sure that's an interesting one too I guess it's an open but not sure check-check 3-6 yeah check-check probably is an open any jack-jacks folded yeah the one with trips and the very weak ones okay this one is quite weak but not weak enough I guess yeah it is marginal but it is an open as you can see making 0.1 big blinds per 100 and not per 100 per hand so this was fine oh that's very interesting one I liked to go for the check raise but yeah I am not sure if this is correct he calls 10-7-6 oh the ball is available that's nice and yeah what should we do now in general we should check a lot as yeah this is not hitting our range that well but also yeah it's not too bad as the cards are not too low as you can see we also slow play a lot of good hands let's see what our specific holding is supposed to do our specific holding is supposed to bet some and check some can we find any pattern which hands makes sense to bet and which not I guess that's kind of tough and yeah probably also the sim didn't run long enough to find hands which should bet and which should check seems like hands with two backdoor flush draws in the betting category for sure but all the other stuff is still unclear So yeah, let's now see, once we check and face a small bet, what we are supposed to do. Oh, our hand calls, not that often, um, but we like to re-raise a lot. Cannot re-raise to check raise a lot. Um, but not the size I choose. Um, we should raise for half pot only. And what are we now doing if getting shafted all in? I guess we pulled. Or are we? I mean, if he is not having a straight, we are in quite good shape. Okay, we are not raised. Folding, we are raised calling. Although this feels very, very bad, yeah, hi. Once we get caught, this happens and we run to the nuts, but yeah. Our opponent will not have the nuts that often. I mean, we block it a bit and yeah, against everything else we got good equity. Let's go back to this situation and let's try to see how much check raising we do. And yeah, we don't do much check raising. And yeah, it would, I find it interesting when the solver chooses a half pot sizing. So with a lot of very strong hands. The nuts choose the half pot sizing. And yeah. With top sets and a gut shot is also like close to the nuts in my eyes, ten, ten, five, five. So blocking the lower wraps. And top set, so are there any weekends? Ah, okay. No, that's also not that weak, uh, seven, eight, ten, so. Gut shot, blocking the straight a bit, so is he doing it with any bluffs? Or hands that are king, jack, ten, nine, okay, king, jack, ten, nine, looks quite fluffy to me. Gut shot to the nuts, two backdoor flush draws, right? Yeah, okay, let's let's try to find his bluff part, okay, eight, five again, but with overpair kings, queens. With the gut shot. Is there, are there any? Bad folds in here, I wonder. So all these hands look quite good. So interesting, what, what is? Jack, check, ten, nine, yeah, okay, overpair in the gut shot again. Uh, queen, queen, ten, nine, okay, same, king, king, ten, eight, yeah, that's all the same stuff. Which, what are the weakest things he's doing with, with, okay, top pair. And only having a five blocker, so that's quite weak. Uh, one backdoor flush draw only. Five, five, seven, ace, okay, that's definitely bluff. Five, five, seven, ace again, uh, ace, jack, jack, ten. Don't get wet one. I guess the jacks are blocking. Eight, nine, a bit because often when you have eight, nine, you have a jack, we will, that's where, but yeah. Not the greatest blocker for sure. Eight, seven, five, five, okay. Okay, we are some bluff in there. Okay, let's see how much you still fold. Yeah, so where is not that much, we still want to fold. Okay, eight, eight, pure blockers makes sense. Seven for four, yeah, that's also like bluffy stuff, yeah, so many hands with adjust top pair or pure blockers. Top pair with the five. Ten, jack, jack, queen, what is this? Nothing basically, ah, it's very interesting in my eyes. What he is doing with, um, the overpair and the gut shot, I think we sense also getting raised called. Correct. Let's find one. I bet the nuts, uh, we need to go. Uh, king, king, nine, seven, yeah, that's just a gut shot and an overpair. And these hands are supposed to bet call. Although this seems very weak. I mean, what is your opponent supposed to have in order to make this a good race call? Yeah, okay, could have guess against everything but the straight, we do quite well. I mean, not quite well, but we have equity. If he has said, we have the gut shot. Then the overpair can hit, so six outs. Six outs. How much equity has six outs? Yeah, we often also have at least one backdoor flush draw, sometimes two. So we have like seven or eight outs maybe. Seven or eight outs, what is this, any V? I mean, there's a rule of two and four in no limit hold them. Uh, which means that you multiply your outs. Before, if you are on the flop and getting all in and with two, if you are on the turn. So if we use this, um. We have four multiplied six, twenty-four percent. This is not that much and if you have up against the straight, we have like three outs to split pot. Yeah, but sometimes we have a lot more outs, I guess. He might be bluffing with something like eight. Four, five, and in this case, we have, we are ahead. Or if he has like ten, seven, we probably also do very well because we can, we can counterfire him. When the six pairs and then after the turn cards come, we also get more outs again. But still, um, I'm unsure if against, I think against most hu- most humans, these um, let's call them marginal check raises, um, for only fifty percent pot are profitable to get in. Like the king, king, eight, seven. I mean, if people go bad, three bad. I think they are probably a lot stronger. Uh, than the GTO range. Let's, uh, let's look into the shoving range. So all in, oh, that's a lot, actually. So against a small raise. Button should react with forty-two percent all ins. And yeah, uh, yeah, straights getting in a lot. So what weekends are getting in, so that we can raise calls so light. Ace, jack, ten, nine. Ah, okay, he has similar hands to like ours, um, like top pair and a gut shot. And against Wies, we do very, very well if we have an overpair with a gut shot. Yeah, overpairs with gut shots, so the same, uh, things we had. Jack, jack, nine, yeah, overpair, gut shot. To the nuts. King, king, nine, nine. Although king, king, nine, nine has a very low frequency. Let's skip that one, ace, king, ten, eight. Again, top pair in the gut shot. Ace, king, ten, eight, top pair in the gut shot. Ace, check, check, eight, what are hands like ten, seven doing? Ten, seven. Is, okay, let's exclude seven, seven and ten, ten and eight, nine. Here we go. Get ten, we also need to exclude six, six. As this said as well, um, yeah. Ten, seven, so three pair in the gut shot, so we sense also get it in, let's see the weakest ones. So ten, seven, five, jacks, so some blockers to the straight draws and, and yeah, whatever the jack is, the jack might help a bit, it's in indirect, indirect blocker button. Not a great one. Uh, ten, seven, blocking a four, so yeah, it looks like ten, seven. It's not impressed if we, if we get raised backs. Small, the ten, seven is not impressed at all and just shoves it in the majority of the time. It's never folding and yeah, sometimes it's just calling. But yeah, as I said, not impressed at all. Question also is how much is ten, seven betting in the first place? So I guess we are already the better candidates chosen, um. Which have gut shots to or block at least the straights a bit, so. Yeah, that's why probably we can get in that often. What about ten, six? Ten, six is also, um, basically doing the same thing. We also need to exclude the seven. As we down want to have three pair, uh, yeah, still, no folds. And yeah, most of the time we just get it in. What about ten, uh, seven, six? Not sure how often this is betting. We also need to exclude a ten. This is also getting all in most of the time, even without the straight. Oh, yeah, we have the stronger ones, we got an open ender as well. Let's see some of the weaker ones. Yeah, six, seven, three, nine, yeah, so a block at a straight, so with an open ender to the idiot and of the straight. Seven, eight, six, yeah, six is this. Okay, eight again, nine. So yeah, he is, seems like he's only betting if he is blocking the straight at least a bit. So that he can comfortably, um, stack off once, um, he faces re-raise. Although, um, not sure if this, if you should try this at home because, yeah. I guess the human ranges often are not built like that. And people will, um, not stack off that light and also will not check raise that off. That light, at least that's my impression, not sure if I'm right or wrong. This definitely was interesting. So, um, let's, uh, look into his betting range in the first place. And how he is, um, proceeding with hands like ten, ten. So ten, ten, top set gets bad most of the time, what about middle set? Middle set also loves the bet. Bottom set the same, what about ten, seven? Ten, seven is betting a lot to ten, six. The ten, six checks back some, uh, some of these are slow plays. Where we hit the board very hard with a straight and two pair and yeah, it's hard for your opponent to have something. So we give him a chance to catch up or to bluff on the turn, so makes sense. And what else is checking? Yeah, ten, six, seven, so that's three pair. So I guess if we have not the greatest straight blockers, we want to uh, we want to check and wait for a safe turn. Because facing a check raise is not great in our position, what about seven, six? Is this now checking more? Yeah, so seven, six is checking a lot more and yeah, I guess, um. There's also another reason why the button, button can bet, um. A lot, not a lot, but some. Hands, um, because we only have, he already has the informational advantage. Because the three better already showed weakness or perceived weakness. And he also has a positional advantage, so it's a lot more easy for him to to bet. Yeah, this was quite educational already, at least for me. Not sure, maybe you already knew all that, but I definitely didn't. Yeah, let's move on to the next hand. I think I made a mistake here. Yeah, how was the, how the hell get, uh, did this pot get so big? I think it was like, I open raise. Um, the button, min, re-races or something, so makes it seven, B or something. Ja, lust calls, that's seven, B, B. And I'm now come back over top, make it like twenty something, twenty-three or whatever is possible. Twenty-four, twenty-five, whatever, whatever my possible race is and yeah. When both call, then I see this flop and then I got bad into and have one opponent left behind. And yeah, I don't like my sport anymore. But I think, uh, the mistake was already made pre-flop and I should not have put that much money in. But, uh, let's try to figure this out, so yeah, actually it's very hard for us to model, model a situation like this because yeah, there is no min raise in GTO, but let's see what we are supposed to do. If these are normal players and if we face, uh, normal three bad and a cold call. Are we now still happy with our hand and do we want to put more money in? And the answer is we want to fold if we have no suit. And if we got a suit, we want to put more money in. Okay, fine, um. What else could we do to, what if we face one opponent and he is in position? Do we want to put more money in? Yeah, we want to put more money in. We even want to put more money in if we are rainbow. What if we got this, the chance to squeeze with our hand? And let's say we are out of position. I guess that's probably not happening, right? But yeah, let's see, not, never check this one. So is this a squeeze or not? So is this a squeeze or not? It's still been squeezed and the rainbow version is actually folded, but the squeeze has very low EV as you can see. How many aces get slow played in this spot? Are any aces getting slow played? Not much. Yeah, it seems like the very, very weakest ones. Though, okay, that's he's, he's, they told me before that these, although yeah, okay, that's so the very weakest aces get slow played, but in general we want to put pressure on and re-raise. Okay. Good to know. And we are only folding 3 aces. Yeah, that makes sense too. And quad aces also. I think quad aces get folded all the time and in every position. Yeah, so yeah, what else can we do now? Unfortunately, I ran out of hands. Anyone in chat has a converted hand for me, which he wants me to review. If not, we could look into some more GTO spots. But what is worth exploring? I did a lot of monochrome boards lately, so maybe we should continue with other lockdown boards. Also, if you, also questions also if you want to do lockdown boards in raise port and re-raise port in position, out of position. Let's be in position or let's do a cut off versus button one first and go with let's find the some, let's find the straight. Do we want a flush draw too? Let's do this one without a flush draw first. Let's see how we are supposed to construct our ranges out of position. A lot of checking is going on. Even with what is the nuts? The nuts is jack queen. So even with jack queen. Yeah, okay, the ones that smashed the board completely with top set and a flush and a straight. Check a lot. This makes sense. Yeah, so one would have top pair and straight and a redraw also checks some. How many, how, what is the frequency or straight is supposed to bet? Oh, that's very interesting. With jack 10, we only bet 14% of the time and we check 85%. This is very sick. So even if we made this trade, we don't bet that much, that often. What is with the jack, jack? How often do we bet with this one? Okay, even with the, let's remove the queen. So what we don't have is straight. We also remove the 7. We definitely have no straight. The blockers also don't get utilized that often. As you can see, only 27% of our jack, jack hands bet. And many of them have a set. So when we block the straight, so this makes sense too. So let's remove the possibility of a set. 10, 10 must go. 9, 9 must go. 8, 8 must go. And now, yeah, the betting percentage remains about the same. So yeah, not much of our blockers want to bet. And I think the thing with GTO and blockers is that we usually want to have some backup in order to utilize the blocker. So you want a gut shot with it or two pair or something. Because a blocker bluff without any additional equity is not that attractive at least in the GTO world. Although you see some hands here which have no additional blockers or are just having like one backdoor flush draw. Or maybe yeah, 3, 3, 2. So that we can make a set. What is 5, 6? So yeah, but there is additional equity actually. We got 2 set draws more or less or we got an idiot end of the straight. Also an idiot straight draw. So a little bit extra is in there most of the time. Let's look at this. Yeah, but a gut shot, another gut shot, moghut shot, gut shot. Gut shot. Let's do more of a bet. What is this? Yeah, gut shot and top pair. Hmm, 2 pair. And a gut shot. Yeah, and an open end. Yeah, so if we bet, we want some additional equity. Not sure if I want. I think in reality people don't follow this principle very much. I guess once most or many people see blockers, they use them and try to put pressure on the opponents. Yeah, if your opponent can fold by any means, this often makes sense. I mean, in the past, I always was, I also was like this and was going very hard after my opponents. Once I had the blockers, but I changed my line of play a bit. I mean, I still use the blockers probably a bit too often, but now I also look for additional equity in order to bluff, especially if you are up against more opponents than one. So yeah, let's move on. So the, on a board like this, the out of position player doesn't want to bet often. And a gessie in position player will bet a lot more. Yeah, you can see he's almost betting 50% of the time. And the bet size, which is used, is 50% for both players. How often is he betting with 10 jacks? 10 jacks is for the out of position player was just used like 15% and here it's bet the majority of the time. But still a lot of slow plays going on with 42% checking of the nuts straight. So it is definitely interesting to see what other hands are getting bets. What is this? This is still a straight. Let's find some non-straight hands. As these betting ranges is quite big. The low betting frequency might also be a function of the range construction of the 2 players. I guess the calling range of the button might include a lot of jack 10 hands. So this might be why we check so much. But yeah. Not sure about that. That's just a theory. Yeah, so open end, a pair is getting bet. But what is straight again? I think I might have remissed with the hand. I think I missed the hand. It was a pair in the, in the straight. So yeah. Moving on to some hands lower down here. Yeah, so bluffs with some blockers. Like ace, jacks, 3, 3. I mean, the cent has no chance to win at all. Okay, that's also at just 2%. So let's take the ace, queen, 5, 3. Yeah, this hand has no chance of winning. And so it's turned into a bluff. We block a straight a bit and we still got some cards that help to continue on the turn. Namely, okay, not that much because there is no hard backdoor flush draw. There is just a club backdoor flush draw. But still, that's a little bit of help. And yeah, if a jack rolls off or king, is king correct? Nick, king is not correct, I think. Although king is also correct. Yeah, we can make some gut shots and other things that give us some backdoor equity. Ace, queen, 4, 3. Yeah, that's also rubbish. Just a backdoor flush draw, blocking the straight a bit. Trying to take it down because otherwise the pot is lost almost ever. Yeah, hands like this getting utilized from the button using the power of position. Ace, queen, 4, 3. Yeah, that's also nothing. And yeah, let's see. We check king, king. Okay, checking king makes sense. We check 8, 5, 4, 3. Yeah, so we check. But is there something interesting in the chicken range that we want to explore? Yeah, again, a lot of slow plays as we already found out. Another interesting thing to look at is what 7 jacks, jack 7 is doing. I guess a lot of checking because we don't want to get in trouble, into trouble with the second nut straight. And yeah, we have to remove the queen. And yeah, as you can see, the second nut straight is not getting bet. That often. And if we bet, we have some additional stuff with it. So for example, jack, jack, so we block the nut straight and we also got a nut, gut shot to the nuts. And backdoor flush draws. Or we got to pair with it. Or we got a set with it. So not just relentlessly betting it. Yeah, we need backdoor equity. Otherwise it will go to the checking range. Making our checking range a lot stronger. I already knew that, but I want to let you know. And yeah, let's see how the ranges change once we have not a rainbow board, but board that also has a flush on it, which one did we use before? 10, 9, jack, I think. Okay, 10, 9, 10, 9, 10, 9, 8 was it? Queen, jack, mate, the straight. Yeah, correct. So this one. And yeah, let's see how much will change on this one. We are still not betting a lot. So that remained the same. Jack 10. Jack 10 is not the nuts. Queen, jack. It's nuts. So yeah, queen, jack now is better with a bit more, but yeah, still a lot of checking. So yeah, in general, in position wants to play this very passive. And yeah, what the, yeah, it looks like not much is changing in terms of frequencies. How is the flush draw played? Flush draws better a lot. Let's also remove the nuts from the flush draw. It's still getting better a lot. Yeah, okay, probably hands that do well against straights will bet like sets in a flush draw, two pair in a flush draw. Stuff like that. Gut shot on a flush draw might bet, but not sure. That's in the yeah, where is a gut shot in a flush draw? Which is another gut shot in a flush draw. So seems like this is getting bad. What is this? Open end, a flush draw. And then over pair. Yeah, gut shot in a flush draw. Let's move down a bit. See some of the weaker stuff. Ace, 6, 6 for so blocking the lower straight. Having a backdoor flush draw and the nut flush draw is bad also. Although I would have expected this more to be in the check, checking back range because what the fuck do you do if, if you get check raised? I guess you fold, but yeah, it sucks. Oh, fuck, no. Don't want to copy anything to the clipboard. Moving down a bit more here. Queen, 7, 5, 4. Yeah, so that's just betting in order to take it down, blocking this straight a bit. Having some backdoor in case we get caught. Queen, 4. Okay, so yeah, flush draws getting better a lot. Which one check? That's okay, we know. Guesses the ones that don't know what to do with getting check raised and some very strong holdings will slow play. Is that correct? Probably. So yeah, some of the very strong ones with, with hmm. Yeah, that's, although that's just a 10%, this is at 100%. So ace, 10, 7, 6. Ah, that's a straight, but idiot straight with a flush draw. These hand prefers to check. Check 10, 9, 3. So open end and a weak flush draw hands that are not have low nuttiness, but potential, a lot of outs also want to check as it seems. 2 pair. Weak open end. No, that's not an open end. That's a gut shot and a flush draw checks. 2 pair. And that was the same one. 10, jack, jack, king, checks. So blocking the straight, having an over pair. And 3, although what's put in the betting range more often as this is only 30%. So probably more close to a bet when a check. Yeah, this hand is, can I, can do both as it seems. Ace, jack, 10, dews. Yeah, ace, jack, 10, dews is yeah, it has nuttiness. But yeah, getting check raised, I wouldn't love it. Check 7, 6, 5 is checking always. So yeah, as we already determined before, the non-nut straight often wants to check and even with weak flush draws, we want to check. What is this? Gut shot and 2 gut shots, double gut shot, flush draw. Checks some, but seems to be betting more often. So what are these 100% ones? Yeah, gut shot to a weak straight, gut shot to yeah, this is to another one card straight and a nut flush draw checks. So yeah, it seems to be a mix between checking and betting. So and very hard to determine and find a pattern in general. That's often the case. So when this is happening often, just try to play a bit opponent dependent and yeah, when I am not able to determine a pattern, that makes sense. And also it's, it's general, I think. Yeah, and also it's, it's in general, I think a good rule of thumb to check a hand um where you don't know what to do if you got to get raised. So yeah, being polarized on these boards makes some sense. So either have a hand where you have an easy decision or so easy decision in both ways. You can easily fold once you get raised or you can easy stack off or call, but you don't want something in between when you have no idea what the fuck you should do. Hmm. Should we do another one with different positions? Yeah, let's do another one and show how stuff changes if we do it with different positions. Let's make it nah, not, we want a three word pot now, I think we don't want a three word pot. Uh we have just the button against the big blind, so the ranges should look quite similar. Um the button uh has the pre-flop nuttiness in his range and the ba- the big blind not anymore. Yeah, not sure, it could also be my uh fault because yeah. Um at the moment I'm using uh an internet that's dependent um on the wow, the fuck is it called? Yeah, it's not a landline, it's like on the mobile um internet. And sometimes this sucks very hard and is not working properly. Uh yeah, this was quite painful today, um because yeah, in my session I got disconnected twice. Luckily, uh at least I was able to get back in the big hands. Um in time, but yeah, still annoying. And you definitely have a good sweat when you already put in like fifty BB and then the internet connection goes down and you are like, oh, come back! Don't want to lose with this money without having the chance to do anything about it. Okay, um what was the board? This is a board, let's look into the best board and yeah, I guess not much dunking again. Oh, more dunking than before. Yeah, so this um the low betting frequency from the cut-off probably was also a function of the range construction and the button was supposed to have a lot more jack tens in his range. And that's why um almost the whole range of the cut-off came a check. Okay, now um we got a lot more bets here from the big blind, at least more than the example before where we had cut-off versus button. And we are again out of position, but we are betting instead of fifteen percent, we betting twenty-six percent. Hmm, 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 yeah. Lot of hell with, oh, although that's a straight and dunking the straight makes sense, I guess. Let's see what else is getting dunked, I guess, um probably hands with blockers and that cannot continue otherwise. Set is dunked. Although, yeah, not always as it seems and also the solver was unsure about this. Um I mean, this, I, I, I have to be honest with you. I, it would very much suck if you get raised here. I mean, you have nine, nine with a six as well, so a ten or a five can give you a straight. But if you get raised, you are in a world of pain. Ten, ten, eight, six, so yeah, open ender, blocking the straight, but only two percent. So ignore that, um ten, eight, four, this is used at a higher percentage. So a set with a good open ender, this one makes sense and you are not in that much hurt. You get raised, nine, nine, four, ace. This is just top set, so this is interesting. Not really any blockers. I mean, I would, my tendency would be to check. Okay, uh ace, nine, nine, three. King, ten, ten, six, okay, that's a gut shot. No, that's not a gut shot, that's straight, but we block um the better straight as well. So this makes sense, uh queen, ten, six, yeah, so some bets with the low straight. But again, with additional equity, uh nine, nine, seven, queen. So is this a bad fold? We block our own full house out. And yeah, that's it basically, for some reason we want to bet, but I guess that's probably wrong. Twenty-one percent only and yeah, I guess the again, the sim didn't run long enough. Nine, nine, deuce, deuce should bet. Very interesting, so a lot of top sets bet, uh some middle sets bet as well, but these ones seem to have additional um equity, but six, four is not helping that much against ten, jack, to be honest. Eight, eight, six, four, again. Uh yeah, none of these is better to one hundred percent, eight, eight, queen, four. Okay, okay, what's this? This is like to pair, blocking this trade, having an open ender and the and the open ender to the top is also to the nuts. So okay, yeah, this is heavily built around having blockers when you bet with marginal hands and you sometimes bet sets, I guess, we will also continue against the raise, but we can find out, so what's the raise size? Default raise size is three quarters pot and yeah, let's now find out what our YOLO set bets are now doing. So yeah, our YOLO set bets now just either ship it in or call. Seems like calling is in general the preferred option. Some also want to be all in, looks like if we got back up, yeah, so two backdoor flush draws with the top set or blocking the straight a bit when sometimes the solver decides to get in. Um nine, nine, jack, so that's can also make this trade, so additional equity is definitely needed when you want to get it in. But default line is to just call. Uh what is, is weaker sets that we don't, yeah, we also are not folding. Yeah, we are basically never folding with weaker sets after dunking. Okay, so I wonder, I think we cannot check this out. You can do me a favor and check out what is said now would be doing. Um once he called the flop raise, um if he faces more, faces more action and the turn is a blank. Um you, as you got vision, um meanwhile, uh let's now look how the button would proceed once it's checked to him. No, no showdown value in combination with blockers and backdoor equity seems good candidates for leading the flop. Same raise pot, yeah, I think that's the case. No, um seems like um some sets even with no or weak blockers lead the flop and then they call a raise. And yeah, I wonder what we do if we face more action on the turn. Is, I, I think I all, I looked it up already before, but not sure about it. Uh I think it's calling again on the turn and then folding the river, but yeah, I don't know anymore. So um the button is betting about half his hands. And this time, this straight is not getting slow played very much anymore. The straight is bad almost ever, only if we have like the hyper nuts with a set, for example, is well, when we consider checking some. And yeah, what else is in our betting range? Play filters. So and see some of our hands, I guess, blockers and stuff. Um yeah, the second nut straight is in there when we have additional backup. For example, in form of a gut shot to the nuts. Or what is this set? If an open ender. Uh bottom set with a gut shot again, ten, queen, that's a let's go move more, more down to more critical hands. Uh king, queen, jack, ten, so yeah. No showdown value for also the nuts, yeah, trying to take it down. Also having a backdoor flush for helps because we can continue on more turns. Uh queen, ten, ace, a little bit better blocker than the hand before, also with a backdoor flush draw. See some more stuff that has even less equity. Ace, queen, five, three, what is this? Um a queen is a very marginal blocker, a five is also a very marginal blocker to the straights, the queen is only an indirect, indirect blocker, the five blocks, five, six. And yeah, we got two back to flush draws. Hmm, we, we have back to straight draws, not really, so yeah, that's a very weak one. And yeah, jack, five, three, three, just blocking a jack and a five. Um back to flush draws, one, and yeah, this hand basically has no showdown value, will never win. Um if your opponent is any competent, so you can as well bet the flop and try to take it down. Ace, king, jack, five, that's also nothing. So yeah, uh looks like this is also a polarized betting strategy with some slow plays in there, but yeah, in general uh hands with low showdown value or no showdown value and some blockers uh like to step on the flop. And yeah, our good hands step on the flop as well with occasional slow plays in there too. So what else is checking? Let's look into some more checks, so some straights check, which we already said, yeah. How much, what is the action with this excluding a jack? Um yeah. Ten, six is checking more than betting and um looks like ten, six is betting a lot with imposition. So um this rule of thumb I said, um that we don't want to bet second nut straight that much. Um is especially true for out of position, in position we bet it a bit more as you can see, but still the majority checks. Uh let's look into some more hand categories that we want to check. Queen, queen, five, six, yeah, that's um the, not the second, not the third nut straight. I guess this one will get checked even more often or almost always. It can just bet with strong backup would be my guess. So yeah, this is check ninety-five, ninety-four percent. And if we bet, we have strong backup, for example, in the form of a set. Uh what else? Not now. Um yeah. Okay. What else is checked? Checks, okay, that's, that, I, I, I thought this might have been, um jack, jack, six, five. So the low straight, blocking the high straight is getting checked. I guess that's also a good bluff catching candidate, so yeah, let's, so let's choose this as bluff catcher. So let's get down more to the hands with even less equity. Um seems like almost all of them are six, five. Let's move down a bit more and it's again six, five. So yeah, why is this all six, five? Ah, easy explanation because I said that it should be. So let's look into this without only six, five. Um okay, we check if we have hands that don't like to get check raised at all. Like ten, seven with kings. Seven, five, what is this? Uh yeah, like gut shot, two pair, yeah, two pairs with out backup also. And generally tend to lie to see a three card. Um this is seven, ten, yeah, so hands that don't play very well if they get raised, but have equity. Ace, ace, jack, deuce, I guess this one is just giving up. Uh king, king, four, five, yeah, probably also just giving up. King, king, eight, four, yeah. Yeah, probably giving up too. Uh ace, king, seven, four, yeah, no strong blockers, um yeah, hand sucks, so we check. Um ace, king, queen, three, okay, no blockers to the board, so we have to give it up as well. Ace, four, three, two, same story. Let's look into some stuff like tops, top two. Um I guess majority of them will check because this makes a lot of sense. And let's also remove jack ten from this one. And looks like I'm wrong, let's also remove ten, seven. Okay, top two are getting bad a lot. Why is that? Because I made a mistake defining the hands. And let's also remove five, six. So yeah, top two still bet a lot and but it looks like it's only betting when it has backup in form of additional gut shots, for example, what else? Uh this was also having a gut shot, um this has nothing else but two back to flush draws. Um sometimes top two want to bet without any backup. I guess that's more or less a bluff and it will fall to a check raise. Um okay, which, uh which, which hands are, okay, we, if we have top two with a straight, especially the weaker straights, we like to check. Um if we have an open ender with it, uh it seems to be a mixed strategy between checking and betting. Um what is this? Um nine, eight, seven, so three pair. And the, the bad open ender prefers checking. Eight, nine, jack, uh with again a gut shot, sometimes it wants to check to uh eight. Uh, 8, 9, 8, 6, so the weaker open ender, but it seems like it prefers betting. Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's general, general pretty mixed. Um, so yeah, seems like you can go either way because yeah, we cannot determine a clear pattern when it's bad and when it's not. My rule of thumb already always is if I block the straights, betting can be, can make sense and if I have no backup at all, checking can be the way to go. But yeah, no, seems like the solver is not following this line. Uh, let's now also look at top and bottom pair. I hope this has more checking. Hmm, it should, but not sure. Um, yeah, it's still betting a lot. Um, some of them have backup. 9, 7, king, king, that's an interesting choice for bad, but yeah, it's, it's, it's not bad. The majority more of it, I would check back. Hmm, let's, okay. Yeah, okay, okay. Um, yeah, still good enough to bet a lot. It seems, um, what about 8, 7? 8, 7, at least bottom pair is checking a lot. Let's remove a 9, too. Yeah, and if we don't have, we are not allowed to have a 9, um, when so bottom pair probably, um, it makes sense to say that you should check a lot. You, yeah, what, what hands are getting bad? Yeah, the ones with nuttiness, having a nut gut shot. What else? Oh, this was not a good nut gut shot, sorry. Oh, it was a nut gut shot, but it also was an open ender. So the ones with strong backup can bet sometimes. Hmm, 8, 7, 4, ace, I guess this one is, some are just betting to take it down and yeah, if you, I mean, if you. This is one backdoor flush draw, yeah, again, hard to see a clear pattern, but general idea behind bottom 2 on the lockdown board is to check it back and see turn. Hmm, no, I think we are now the imposition player, as you can see. I changed from the out of position to the imposition player. So that's, when it's a check back, so. Oh, that's very tiring to do these analysis. Um, and also it feels like we didn't learn that much because solver is playing a weird strategy, betting all sorts of hands. Okay, let's find out something, so if he gets check raised, what is his reaction with the majority of his 9, 8? Hands, okay, the main reaction is to call and to only fold the weakest. But if he has not, not straight with it. Jack, 10 is a straight, yes, it is. Um, yeah, he wants, if he bets, he doesn't want to fold. What about top and bottom pair? He also doesn't want to fold, he continues basically with everything. And what about 8, 7 with no stray, at least with no nut straight? Yeah, he also, so if he bets, he's not folding. It's what we learned. Um, let's figure out one more thing. If we bet here and get raised, are we still not folding with, um, hands like top 2? 9, 8, yeah, still not folding, 9, 7, not folding. Uh, 8, 7. Uh, 8, 7 is folding some, but only the weakest ones. So that's pretty wild, so yeah. So I want to bet quite a lot of rubbish and is not willing to fold. Although, not sure, yeah, need, I need to get vision as said many times already to see what then happens on the turn once he calls with his top 2 and it's blanks, for example. I guess probably he gives up then, but wants to see one more card and yeah, continues with the strongest ones with open ender and where he picked up backdoor flush draw. Yeah. Um, I'm pretty tired already, so, um, not sure if my analysis is still the sharpest. Played a session today and yeah, now did this study session for longer times, so yeah. Will be signing off now, um, yeah, we see each other most likely tomorrow. Yeah, until then, goodbye and I wish you good luck at the tables.